Order?
Absolutely. President Abbas?
President.
Vice President Martin is excused. Alder Carter?
President.
Alder Bennett is running late. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Present.
Okay, present. Alder Heck?
Here.
Alder Lemmer is excused. And Alder Weheli?
Here.
All right, we have quorum.
Thank you very much. Stefan, can we do an IT announcement, please?
Sure. All right. Welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members of the committee, if you're able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you're able, please activate your video when you're speaking. In this meeting, panelists have the ability to mute and unmute themselves. Panelists also have the ability to add pronouns after their names if they choose. Please do not alter the current naming convention. Simply add text after your name. Please use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. Staff, please use the raise hand feature when you're asked a question. The chair will do their best to call in committee members in the order in which hands are raised. The ring your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You are remain needed until called upon. Staff will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the committee, please send it to the email listed on today's agenda. President Abbas, floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Stefan. Can we have a motion for approval of the minutes?
Move approval of the minutes.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the minutes? I don't see any hand raised. Motion approved. We will next is this. We will move forward with public comments. We have two registrant right now for a public comment. Tyson Vitale from District 16. Tyson, could you please tell us which agenda item would you like to speak on?
Looks like Tyson is not with us.
Tyson is not with us. All right, we will move forward to Bonnie Rowe from District 10. Bonnie, could you please also tell us which agenda item would you wish to speak?
Yes, number one, the Quatron Center report.
Okay, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Good evening to all of you committee members. Thanks for the opportunity to share. I just want to say that after a long, long wait, this Quatron Center review is complete. The report initiated by Acting Chief Wall happened at about the time I started waking up to our police department in Madison. My grandparents live just blocks from where George Floyd was brutally murdered, and I spent a lot of time there growing up. So it felt very close to home, and it was absolutely heartbreaking. And then I watched those peaceful protests morphed into pockets of angry people yelling at and throwing things at our police officers on State Street. At that time, I decided to start researching our police department. Though I had lived here in Madison for 21 years, I had never taken the time to find out what our police department was like. Could we have our own brutal George Floyd murder by cop right here in Madison? Since then, I've spent hundreds of hours over the past year studying our police department from reports, reviews, complaints, and standard operating procedures on paper to ride alongs, the community academy, and many interactions with officers and command staff. And I have been thoroughly impressed. I've been waiting to get my hands on this review because I know the Quatron Center does a thorough, unbiased, comprehensive review, and I wanted to see the results. Thank you to all those who put this work together. Having read the report for the first pass, I'd like to say thank you to MPD for being an open, transparent, and accountable department, to Acting Chief Wall for initiating this important review, and also for the work that went into it. And I appreciate the way Chief Barnes and the department are receiving it, as always, with a commitment to continuous improvement. May these recommendations be carried out and funded by our common counsel where funds are needed for body worn cameras and other recommendations made in the report. The 21st century calls for a commitment to ongoing reform, and I'm grateful that MPD welcomes this and strives for excellence in every interaction. Not every city is so lucky. Thank you and have a great meeting.
Thank you very much, Bonnie. Is Tyson is here now, Stefan?
Looks like he is not with us still.
Okay, we will move forward with disclosures and recusal. Any member of the committee would like to disclose or accuse, this is your opportunity. I do not see any hand raised, so I will move forward with agenda item number two, Legislative File Number 68302, Update Item of Quatron Report. And we have, just one second, we have two people registered. Tyson Vitale from District 16. He's not here, right, Stefan?
Correct. Correct.
We will move next to John Hallway in support and wish to speak.
Hi, this is John Hallway from the Quatron Center, and this may be a registration issue where I'm preparing to present, and I wasn't actually asking to be public comment.
All right, that's totally fine. So we will move forward. We will close our comment section, and we will move forward with an update. So please, you have the floor now.
Okay. May I share my screen, please? I think they already be enabled.
Yep, you should be able to.
Yep, all good. Okay, can you all see that?
Yes, we can see that.
So my name is John Hallway. I'm from the Quatron Center for Administration of Justice. I'm here actually in the Madison Police Department with Chief Barnes and Assistant Chief Valenta. Chief Barnes, if you want to take anything off or introduce anything, we can start there and then...
Sure. Good afternoon, everyone. Just wanted to state that, as previously stated, this process began in 2017 with the ORI report on Madison Police Department Procedure Ad Hoc Committee, which recommended a Sentinel review as part of our processes. And an initial event was selected. However, given the events of 2020, the protest of civil unrest was chosen to do this evaluation. And so we reached out to the Quatron Center, and indeed, this process began. And so we were very excited about it. It's my understanding that we were the only police department that reached out to the Quatron Center. And, you know, one research question that we had was, how can we improve? And so the department was very transparent and open, not only with comments from officers, but documentation, as well as any public space camera and/or YouTube videos that we found. And so we came into this with the Quatron Center because we believe that they were fair and impartial, neutral. And indeed, as I stated before, they had no friends to reward and no enemies to punish. And so we're very satisfied with the work product, and we look forward to the presentation. Assistant Chief Valenta, to my left, was instrumental in this process. She did the yeoman's work of ensuring that this document, or and/or the information, I should say, that's included in this document was provided. And she is certainly a credit to our police department. Did you want to say anything?
I'll just reflect that it was a very positive process, and it really opened doors, I believe, with our community stakeholders to have some very important conversations about how the police department can improve and to increase dialogue after a very tumultuous 2020, a time when we need to come together in order to solve common problems. And that is representative of what occurred here is that coming together of members of the community and the police department to look at events and solve problems and move forward and look in a forward-facing manner to provide the best police services to our community.
Turn it over to Professor Powell.
Thanks, Chief.
Looks like you lost your screen share. I just wanted to let you know.
Yes, thank you. I'm turning it back on now. Okay, are we live?
Yep.
Thank you. So what I'm prepared to talk about here is to explain kind of the concept and philosophy behind the review, the methodology of what we did. And as you'll see, the report, which is pretty lengthy, has, I think, 133 contributing factors and 69 recommendations. Rather than reading all of the 69 to you, we're going to let the report largely stand for itself and try to provide you some high-level takeaways, and then obviously be available for any questions that you may have to make sure that you understand the process and the recommendations. So a Sentinel event review is a slightly different kind of review than what more commonly happens in the criminal justice system. The Quatron Center was started in 2013, and one of the things that we wanted to do was bring principles of quality improvement from other complex human systems, places like healthcare and aviation. And we asked ourselves, hey, you know, plane crashes have gotten steadily rarer since, you know, 1950, to the point where they almost never happen now. Car crashes, we're seeing greater and greater safety and fewer and fewer accidents on the roads. Hospitals have been engaged in the process of quality improvement to reduce medical errors. Why don't we do that in criminal justice? We spent a lot of time in criminal justice looking at who to blame, but we don't spend a lot of time in criminal justice asking what we can learn from an undesired outcome in the criminal justice system. And so what the Quatron Center has been doing over the last several years is bringing those principles of continuous quality improvement from industries like healthcare and transportation into the criminal justice system. And we received grant funding from the Department of Justice's Bureau of Justice Assistance and the National Institute of Justice to help us perform Sentinel event reviews. And so I want to just note that they provided the funding that allowed this research project to move forward as a non-disciplinary process to understand the various factors that came together during the summer of 2020 and caused the undesired outcomes of peaceful protests that escalated into violent and chaotic days and nights with injuries both to protesters and police officers and considerable damage to property. So that was the Sentinel event, if you will, was the summer of protests that became violent. And what we wanted to do was work backwards in sort of a root cause analysis process, working in tandem between community participants and law enforcement participants in those protests to understand why these events escalated and resulted in the undesired outcomes that they did. This is just, you know, some of the work that we've done in using Sentinel event reviews. We've been gradually improving ourselves, our process over time, going back from 2015 and working with many jurisdictions in a lot of different instances. This was the first time that we tried to do Sentinel event review on something as lengthy as these protests. And it presented some unique challenges, but also unique opportunities. As Assistant Chief Valenta said, what we have seen in Sentinel event reviews is that when you bring together participants in events like these from both the community and law enforcement, and you create an atmosphere where you're really asking well-intended people who are participating in community conversations why the protesters were acting the way they were doing things and why the police have the policies and practices that they do, you create a space where healing could happen. So much of the polarization that has gone on in the law enforcement community conversation comes from, I think, an inability to have honest conversations from a good faith perspective. I feel like the community participants we had were phenomenal and honest brokers in that process. We had a lot of very difficult conversations, a lot of very honest conversations, but the group was always able to stay respectful. And as a result of that, we had 69 consensus recommendations. So I want to emphasize that these recommendations are not Quatron Center recommendations. This is a report that the Quatron Center oversaw the drafting of to provide the consensus recommendations of the stakeholder group, which was made up both of a diverse set of community participants and a diverse set of law enforcement representatives. And so in that sense, what MPD did by volunteering to participate in this process was do something that not a lot of other criminal justice organizations do on a regular basis. It's very common, as I said, to look back and say, you know, who should be held accountable for this thing that happened in the past? It's much rarer to take advantage of the forward-looking accountability, the accountability that our government organizations have to say, we weren't perfect in this case. How can we improve going forward? And it's that embracing of the obligation to our communities to improve over time that we think provides, again, part of the reconciliation that will be needed as we emerge from what was an extraordinarily difficult, challenging, and painful summer and work to make sure that that sort of thing doesn't happen again. There's never just one thing that causes a Sentinel event to happen. It's always a confluence of factors. This is a metaphor that gets used in safety and quality literature from a British scientist named James Reason, and it's called the Swiss cheese model of error. And the idea is, if you think about the three months of protests that we looked at as the block of Swiss cheese, and each day, each interaction, each communication, each decision as a slice of the Swiss cheese, the holes in each slice represent the opportunities for an unintended consequence to go. And normally, we have other checks and balances in the system that are designed to prevent those errors from reaching a tragic point. Sometimes, all of your holes in your Swiss cheese line up, and that allows, you know, a protest to go from a calm, peaceful, civil conversation and protest into the sort of, you know, State Street damage that we saw the night of May 30. And so what you realize is the way to try to improve the safety of the system is to learn about as many of those different holes in the Swiss cheese as you can and try to close as many of them as you can. And so that's why, even though we looked at, you know, 14 critical incidents, we end up with 133 contributing factors. There were all sorts of things that contributed to each of those events. Some of them were global, like the national outrage and outpouring of emotion after the murder of George Floyd, or the prevalence of social media, which allows for, I think, more rapid communication and mobilization of crowds, but also can escalate to motions. COVID certainly played a role in amplifying emotions, and I think in amplifying many people's dissatisfaction with government and the restrictions that were being placed upon them. All of those things are part of what the Madison Police Department was faced with when the protests began. And then based on the events of May 30, you know, those events then become contributing factors. They contributed to events on May 31, and June 1, and June 5, and August 5 as we moved through the summer. So just understanding that there are lots of opportunities for improvement across all of the participants in these protests as we work together to try to create an atmosphere that is safe for people to exercise their First Amendment freedoms, which is really at the core of the Madison method. So as Chief Barnes said, then Chief Wall called and said, hey, I know we were going to do another Sentinel event review, but I really think that this is the more important place to study. And so we started actually talking about this in July of last year. And then we had the shooting of Jacob Blake in Kenosha, which obviously is in the news again, even as we're speaking. And so we expanded the review to cover from the beginning of the protests after the murder of George Floyd, through an arrest in late June of a protester, and that arrest triggered additional violent protests, and then extending to the protests that happened in Madison after the shooting in Kenosha of Jacob Blake. Fortunately, and I think one of the things that sort of is maybe notable by its absence in the report is there were no moments that we reviewed in which the Madison Police Department was not professional. There was nothing to suggest that the department wasn't good at what they do. The Madison method is recognized nationwide as a way of facilitating the First Amendment, facilitating constitutional rights to assemble, facilitating the ability to have opinions different than the government and to demonstrate those publicly. And while we did talk a lot about structural racism, and as a group, it was very important to our community participants and to our law enforcement participants that we keep an eye out for moments where racial bias could be seen, that we identify those in the report. What we did not see was any explicit racial animus or action by anybody from the Madison Police Department. The critical incidents that we have showed well-intended protesters, for the most part, with very small numbers of violent agitators and well-intended police officers trying to react to kind of unprecedented combinations of circumstances. And so I guess what I would say is it's really important that these recommendations be seen for what they are, which is recommendations for improvement, not criticisms. The fact that there is room to grow and improve does not mean that we started from a point of ineptitude. And we didn't see that in this instance. What we see is a department that is actually incorporating efforts to improve even as the protests are unfolding. And that gave our group an opportunity to kind of compare and contrast some of the different strategies and tactics that the department used and include that assessment in the recommendations that are in the report that you now have today. Finally, this Sentinel event review gives life to number seven in the Madison method because it is itself the pursuit of continuous improvement of those methods. So we feel like the department continued to be true to this method even, you know, certainly throughout the months of protests and then through the Sentinel event. And based on Chief Barnes' commitment to continue to implement these things in a way that is transparent and accountable, I think you'll see that continuing in the coming months. This was a big project. You know, candidly, I, and I think Assistant Chief Valenta would have loved to have put this report on your desk months ago. But it was important that we be thorough rather than vast. And when you see the amount of information, I give the department credit for being transparent with us. There was not a single information request that we placed that wasn't agreed with and satisfied. Ultimately, we had over 1,600 documents that were provided detailing officer activity throughout the protests. We had more than 625 hours of video helping us understand the protests and compare those documents to what we were seeing in the video. We had over 30 hours of audio. And in fact, this information was so voluminous and sort of in different formats and things, we actually used a national law firm called Morgan Lewis and Bakius that has an e-data litigation discovery group, and it had specialized tools that allowed us to access all of this information in a systematic way, matching timestamps on videos to things in use of force reports, et cetera, so that we could provide reviewers with a cohesive explanation of the way things unfolded on these nights, in nights where there were, you know, uses of force and instances of violence that were happening in multiple parts of the city at multiple times, and try to make some sense out of all the things that the MPD Command Post was trying to process on the nights that these protests were happening. I should add, we also were able to interview more than 50 interviews with MPD officers who participated in the riots or in the protests, excuse me. And we had, as I think you know, a website, which I think is right here, that brought in community perspectives and allowed for public comment in addition to what we were doing. All of the public comment is included in the report in an appendix, just provided verbatim. And you see, I think, in those responses the great diversity of views on many of these activities that I'm sure you see from your constituents. There were comments that said that we didn't do enough to protect property, and there were comments that said we should have done less to protect property and only focused on people, and who cares about the property? So, you know, in some sense, this document, because it's a consensus document, may be doomed to be a little bit dissatisfying to everyone. But that may mean that it's an accurate reflection of the diversity of views in the community and hopefully represents ways that those diverse views can come together in ways that are productive for everybody. As I said, we were looking at about 90 days worth of protests. Now, on most of those dates, there was no escalation to violence. There may have been inconveniences. There may have been, you know, traffic disruption or other things like that. But we decided to focus on those dates that really had multiple instances of uses of force or property damage and having those be the main focus. So you'll see that the report really focuses on these three peaks of activity. The first weekend of protests, where we had both an evening of violence on State Street, followed by an evening of violence on Wisconsin Avenue. As I said, the protests that followed in the wake of the arrest of Devonair Johnson on the 23rd of June, and then posted the shooting of Jacob Blake and the kind of Madison response to what happened in Kenosha. As I said, we did about 50 interviews with Madison Police Department personnel. And if you'll allow me, kind of with an apology for this being a sports analogy, the best analogy I've been able to come up with with what we're trying to do when we're asking questions is we're trying to understand why thoughtful, caring, good faith, well-trained, experienced professionals nonetheless were involved in outcomes that they didn't want to have happen. The Madison Police Department, the officers of the Madison Police Department didn't wake up on the morning of May 30 and think, this is really exciting. Tonight, we're going to have six hours of people yelling insults at us, throwing things at us that could hurt us, pushing flaming dumpsters towards us and destroying property in the city where we are, you know, sworn to protect. I think the protesters don't wake up in that morning and think, this is great today. We get to have a showdown with the police and be, you know, exposed to OC spray or other chemical munitions. Nobody wants those things to happen, and yet they did anyway. And so when we're interviewing the Madison Police Officers, who, by the way, not all of whom got interviewed by us voluntarily, and we had no ability to compel anybody, we, you know, look at Aaron Rodgers, and the analogy is to him throwing an interception, right? There's no question, he's one of the best in the world at what he does. There's no question, he's one of the best in the world at what he does, there's no question, he's been well-trained, there's no question, he knows how to run these plays, he's done them hundreds of times, and yet in the chaos that happens after the ball is hit, he is making reads, making adjustments, making decisions in this dynamic environment, and he makes a decision that that pass is his best outcome. That's what will help him achieve his goals the most, and then it doesn't go well. As I said earlier, when we were talking about this, I come from Philadelphia, we boo Santa Claus, so, you know, I know what it is to be in the third deck and criticizing the quarterback for an interception. The fact of the matter is, in that instance, I rarely know what I'm talking about, because I don't see what Aaron Rodgers sees. And so what we want to do is kind of be in the conversation the way Aaron Rodgers and the Packers quarterback coach is, where they're talking, knowing how the play is supposed to go, knowing all the things they've already tried to account for, and trying to figure out why it didn't go well, so that they can redesign the play and achieve greater success the next time they run that play. And that's the spirit in which we had the interviews, is to understand for the actual participants there, not to substitute our own belief structure for what people in the protest might have thought, but to talk to both law enforcement and community participants in the process, and really understand why they did the things that they did, so that we can interfere with the progression of escalation that takes a peaceful protest and ends in violence. And that that why from the actual participants yields novel insights that is not available through other processes that we might have pursued. So we brought the stakeholder group a list of, I think about 25 potential critical incidents. So these are moments within the days we were focusing on, that the stakeholder group felt were particularly concerning, particularly undesirable, and where we really wanted to spend our time and drill in with great detail. And so you see the 14 critical incidents that are listed in the report. Again, I think we started with about 25, and it was the combined group that decided to prioritize these events, and that then lead to the recommendations that we have. As I said, the result of all that data crunching was then a conversation. So we would prepare a summary of the event and chronology of the event, we would present that to the group, and we would say to the group, now, we've shown you the video, what questions do you have, what reactions do you have, what do you think are the factors that caused this event to go in a direction we didn't want it to go? And one of the really important things to note here is that it is possible for two people to look at the same video and have completely different conclusions about what caused these things to happen. As an example, one of the first things that happened on the night of the 30th was after there had been some damage to Goodman Jewelers, the MPD Special Events Team arrived perhaps 15 minutes after windows were broken at Goodman Jewelers. They arrived to find a group of protesters at the base of State Street. These officers, because there had already been acts of violence directed towards officers, arrived in protective gear. They wore this protective gear for defensive purposes, but we know from speaking to protesters in the crowd, that when officers arrive in protective gear, that actually escalates tension, because the crowd responds thinking that the reason for the protective gear is to protect the officers as they come in and enforce the law. Meanwhile, protesters responded by saying allies to the front and sending mostly white protesters to the front of the line. This was interpreted by MPD officers on the scene as an effort to prevent the MPD from moving forward and dealing with people who were looting and rioting, when what was expressed to us by the protesters was, actually, this is a defensive mechanism to protect our black colleagues, because we're concerned that the police will be targeting them first. And so we had a situation where each side, believing they were doing something defensive and protective, was actually contributing to an escalation of tensions with the other side, and that began to ratchet up. And it's these sorts of observations that are necessary if we're going to be able to work with MPD, to have MPD modify its behaviors in ways that are constructive and de-escalating protests. And the MPD officers didn't recognize the signals that the protesters believed they were sending and vice versa. And so it's insights like that that you really only get once you've created the atmosphere that allows for that honest exchange of dialogue and real perceptions as the events are unfolding. So our 133 contributing factors incorporates these very different views, and led to 69 consensus recommendations, including, as you see here, kind of the three big pillars of this are: recommendations about communication with separation on ways to communicate with the community before protests, during protests, and after protests; 36 recommendations for modified or improved or enhanced tactics, again, before, during, and after; and then a smaller number that we're dealing with equipment and environment, 16 of those, that making sure that the officers have the tools that they need to be able to achieve their goals of facilitating these protests rather than controlling them, and certainly de-escalating tensions rather than escalating them. So I've got two slides with some key takeaways, and then I think we'll be close to the end here. So the first thing to notice is that these protests were different than virtually any other protests that have happened in Madison in recent memory, because these were protests about the legitimacy of policing. And I think we saw that nationwide, not just in Madison, that the murder of George Floyd galvanized a public across the United States that was appalled by those acts, and that said, we've had enough, policing has to change. When police are the subject of the protest, the presence of police is itself an escalating factor, because, and especially when you're using like a fixed line, for example, because the fixed line is viewed as a show of force, aggression, and defiance by police. And since the entire focus of the protest was, we don't think the police are using their authority legitimately or fairly or justly, the crowd's response was to push back very aggressively about that. So understanding that when police are the subject of the protest, we might need to protest a little bit differently is an important takeaway. And the focus on how do we facilitate the crowd's protest rather than trying to control it, in a moment where the thing we're protesting is that we don't want to be controlled, is an important takeaway for the recommendations, particularly around communication and tactics. We do think that tactical changes can prevent the escalation of events and kind of put a stick in the spokes of all these contributing factors coming together. What we saw was that in much the same, well, what we saw was that to say the crowd wanted to do X, as if the crowd was a uniformed, single entity, was not accurate. And in fact, to say that the crowd got violent, what generally we saw was anywhere between two and five people at a time, instigating and agitating within the crowd, kind of fomenting violence in the crowd. The Goodman Jewelers is illustrative. What we saw there was a small group of about five men who began breaking windows at the base of State Street, and then left, and continued to go out on State Street, continuing to break windows. That action created a sort of explosion of emotion in the crowd, and then we saw people going into Goodman Jewelers and into other places, and that's where the sort of the looting started. But it was all originated by just this very small group of people that did the vandalism and then left. And so it was at that point where if we could have inserted a mobile unit, for example, to interfere with that small group, we might not have had the same escalation of events, and we might have interrupted that progression through our Swiss cheese, if you will. It might have been a hole that we closed in our slice of Swiss cheese that prevented us from moving forward into the undesired outcomes that we saw that night. So these tactics can reduce escalation. And what we see is, you know, as I said, the protective gear, and then that leads to a more aggressive response by the community. The more aggressive response then causes the use of chemical munitions, that then causes an escalation from the crowd, and we're looking to kind of interfere with that process, that progression, with tactical changes. We also see a number of situations where MPD officers who believed they were following policy, who were following policy in what they were doing, nonetheless did things that led to a very emotional reaction from our community participants. And so usually these revolved around uses of force where the community felt that there was no galvanizing action that a member of the community had taken that justified the use of force, but there was a legal justification that allowed the officers to use force. So active resistance, for example, is a state law, I believe, a state definition that allows uses of force under certain circumstances. The legal definition of active resistance may include a person who is standing at some distance from an officer and not actively aggressively coming towards them, but nonetheless, within the legal definition of active resistance, the officer would be allowed to use, for example, OC spray, if the officer believed that that would be the lowest use of force necessary to achieve a safety objective. And so we did see an instance, one of our critical instances was with a man who was dancing on the hood of a car. Officers used OC spray to get the man off the hood of his car and move the car, which is facing the wrong way on a one-way street, creating a hazard for other cars in the area. And this was something that our community participants got very concerned about, because what they saw was the use of OC spray on a guy who was just dancing on the hood of his car. And so one of the issues here is, there are these moments where the police are making decisions based on what they believe to be the least amount of physical force, but because they're using certain things and it doesn't appear that the individual is posing an immediate physical threat, the community reacts very strongly and very negatively to these things. Another thing we saw is that the use of the words resisting arrest as a justification for an arrest is something that the community reacted very strongly with and said, hey, for generations, we've been having officers do things they shouldn't do, give orders they shouldn't give, and then if we don't follow those orders, they say we're resisting arrest, and they arrest us and lock us up, and they use force to do so. And so, don't tell me that these arrests are just because I was resisting arrest. That's an ex post facto justification of bad behavior to begin with. And that was, again, news to most of our MPD colleagues, who didn't understand the impact that an explanation of resisting arrest would have on people in the community who felt like this was a common way of doing business for police. So that situational awareness, situational awareness, that understanding of how the acts that the MPD are doing, even if they're within policy, are being interpreted, and that they can be interpreted through a lens that's very different than the experiential lens of the officer, is really important to enhancing the communication as MPD is managing and facilitating these protests. I think Chief Barnes has talked about this and will continue to do so. I think there's no question that there's more work that the department wants and needs to do to continue to build more trust between MPD and its community members. Certainly, in the wake of the murder of George Floyd, a lot of people just didn't want to engage with the police. They said, we're done, we're out of this, we're not going to have these conversations. That deprived the department of information that it could have used to actually facilitate the protests, and it led to the department kind of being in reaction mode as opposed to proactive planning mode about how to facilitate the protests. It's going to be important with a cynical community that the department continue to improve its transparency. And so recommendations are here about having body cams, one of the things, and we had a lot of conversations about body cameras, which I know has been an ongoing topic here in Madison. The fact of the matter is that we were often reviewing events using only CCTV video, and there are things that you can't get from that perspective. It's very hard to see projectiles that are being thrown, there's no audio, and so it's much harder to really get the kind of on-the-street level view of what's going on. One value of body cameras in this context is that we would be able to provide a fuller report to the community about what really happened, and perhaps respond to cynical members of the community who are worried that we're not showing everything, because we simply didn't have that technology available to us. So making sure that we can do whatever we can to do a thorough review and be transparent about these events going forward is a valuable thing for rebuilding that trust. Ultimately, we'd like to get to a place where we are preventing these escalations of events, and where the event review process, it continues to itself be a part of this system. So I know that the department is already implementing a number of the things we talked about. They've already talked about expanding training for officers, so they're getting experience in these more frequently. They've already added some training for supervisors and above on what's called the Incident Command System, which is a way of communicating within the department and responding to crowd events. And I know those communications are going to continue as well. So it's very heartening to come from an academic center and feel like you're having some real-world impact, because the department is already beginning to put things in place, and we're indebted to, I think, the department's willingness to learn and grow and to take this in the way that it's intended, which is to be supportive and promotional of the improved safety, rather than, you know, sort of critical and finger-pointing. And so that's where I will pause, and I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you have. Assistant Chief Valenta, Chief Valenta, I don't know if there's anything you'd like to add.
No. Okay, questions?
Thank you very much for the detailed presentation, and really appreciate all the work you guys put. We will move forward with questions. I see a couple of hand raised. We will start with Alder Figueroa Cole.
Thank you, President Abas. So I have a couple of questions, very simple. And the first one is, when was this report made available to the public?
It was made available this morning.
Okay, thank you. So I thought maybe I missed a notification, so I have not had time to read it today, so we'll get to it eventually, but does the report include the list of the stakeholders and their connections with the protests' planning?
It lists the names of our stakeholder group and their affiliations. I don't believe it names anybody specific involved with the protests.
And the last question, was there a formal process put in place for follow-ups and to continue to build that relationship between organizers, protest organizers, leadership, and the police department?
The report doesn't have any specific guidelines for doing that, it just suggests that the process of building trust and our communicating should be ongoing before, during, and after the protest. What I have been doing, Alder Cole, is speaking with almost snowball sampling, where I'm able to speak to one person in the community, and I ask them if they can connect me with someone else who can give me some more information, and so on and so forth. And so I've spoken with about four persons that I know was specifically on the ground during this time as protesters to get their perspective. At some point, I would like to share this report with them to get their perspective about it, to further increase the trust, or further increase the communication and trust between those persons as well.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you, Chief Barnes.
Thanks.
Thank you, Alder Figueroa Cole. Maitland also, she also uploaded and attached with our agenda item, the report, so you can check there, as well as FII. Alder Carter, please go ahead.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for you. Approximately how many police departments are in the United States?
Yeah, I think it's something like 18,000, Alder?
Out of 18,000, you stated that our very own MPD was the only one that reached out to you. Can you restate that statement?
So when Chief Wall called us, Madison was the only police department that reached out to us in the wake of George Floyd and said we'd like to do a Sentinel event review of the protests that unfolded afterwards. Since that time, we've worked with the Office of Inspector General in Seattle, but Madison was the first to reach out.
Thank you. Another question I have is, you made a statement that a small group initially broke windows down State Street, starting with Goodman Jewelers, and if the police had known this, they could send out a group of, I can't remember the technical name you called it, to deal with that. My question to you is, how would they know that that small group initially broke the windows?
So the way that we were able to establish that was by looking at multiple different CCTV cameras that were functioning on the afternoon and evening of the 30th. And what you see is actually a single individual really working on sort of stoking people's emotions, beginning on Capitol Square, moving around to an incident in front of the city and county building, and then continuing over to State Street and Goodman Jewelers. And while you're watching that, what you see is a small number of people kind of break out from the back of the State Street crowd and begin throwing things through windows, and then you see that small group rest out on State Street and leave the scene. So it was by, again, being able to review all of those cameras, that we were able to piece those things together. Theoretically, that's available to the command post, but it is a challenge to keep up with all of those things while multiple other things are going on. So I think we had the benefit of knowing what had already happened, as opposed to having to do it in real time, but that was how we were able to piece that together.
Great, thank you. The next question I have, when we start talking about resisting arrest, and I think one of the statements that you gave, or one of the definitions that you had up on your PowerPoint, was active resistance, am I right on that? So resisting arrest is super common, we hear about it all the time, and I wanted to know what recommendations are throughout your... And I wanted to know what recommendations or throughout your experience, would you say could be implemented on maybe not using that term or a different definition of that? And I don't know if they're interchangeable, I'm just saying those are the two things I saw on the same slide.
Yeah, understood. I don't think they are precisely the same thing. And I, but I think what I would say in answer to your question is, the reason that we raise those is to underscore the difference between what a trained officer of the law is, you know, how those officers are trained to enforce the law. And the way communities react, community members reacted in terms of whether that enforcement was quote-unquote "just," even if it was technically legal. And so, the actions that an officer can take that are permitted by law, there were moments where we saw that an officer was not doing anything outside of policy, but they were nonetheless doing things that led to a very negative emotional reaction from members of the community who didn't feel like it was just. And that distinction between what's legal and what the community perceives as just is what's important for an MPD to understand so that it can modify its actions in ways that the community then feels are proportional. We saw a number of instances in which officers used force in ways that the community members acknowledged were necessary to produce, to reduce further harm. But we saw a few instances where the community members reacted very strongly and said, "That's not just." And those are detailed in the report, but that's what we were trying to get at with that. So I think, you know, there's a difference in many people's minds, you know, resisting arrest if somebody is aggressively fighting with an officer, right? That's certainly what I think most of us think about when we think about resisting arrest. Resisting arrest legally is the failure to obey an order. So, somebody says, "Stop," and I keep walking. Technically speaking, that could be defined as resisting arrest. The community doesn't perceive it that way and doesn't think it's just when a use of force is then used and justified in that manner. And so, I'm speaking a little bit in generalities, which is dangerous, so I want to be careful about that. But that's the point we were trying to convey so that officers in those situations have a better understanding of why the public is reacting so negatively and can calibrate their responses accordingly.
Can I turn it over? And so, I think what I took from that also is that officers, number one, needs to be able to demonstrate to the public, communicate to the public at the time of an arrest, what is it about a person's behavior that's causing the resistance in the first place? Tracy Mears wrote an article for the Harvard Law Review called "Rightful Policing." And she talked about that intersectionality between what's lawful and what's right. And when the public is evaluating police, they want to see both. They want to see what's right and they want to see what's lawful. Many years ago in policing, I was taught, never be lawful but awful. And what that means is, be lawful in what you're doing, but it's awful in the way it looks to the public. That is not where you want to be in policing. And I think it was very profound that the, that one of the consensus recommendations were, don't go there. Don't be in that space where it's lawful to do something, but indeed, it's not what the community wants to see as being right. I was always taught many, many years ago that resisting arrest isn't a standalone charge. It's not something that you charge someone with, that's usually something else. Is it shoplifting? Is it vandalism? Is it auto theft? And so, that's something that we will certainly be working to re-educate our department on, understanding better to articulate what exactly is happening here. I think there was one example in the report where things were happening so quickly with the arrest of a person and the community said, "Well, what's going on?" And I think the officer may have replied, "Resisting arrest." There's probably a better way to articulate what was happening there, but I think in the scheme of things, if we had communicated that to our group and better trained on it, maybe the articulation would have been differently, which may have led to a different result.
Thank you. And then finally, you stated, I think this was in the last slide, but it might not have been, ongoing communication with angry community members. Are we looking at angry community members, angry organizations? I mean, to me, that's so general and not only that, the number can increase depending on the situation. And quite frankly, depending on the verdict and the Kenosha riot situation with Rattenhower could create additional angry members. So, I just want you to kind of clarify that for me. First of all, let me say this report was fantastic. I was able to peruse it this afternoon and just thank you for doing it. It was a fantastic read. Go ahead.
Thank you. I guess, I may turn this over to you for a second, but what I would say is, I think one of the conversations we had when we were designing that recommendation was the awareness that there were so many different initiatives that are happening and originating from different places within Madison. Some originating from MPD, some originating from the organizations that were also represented in the stakeholder group. And part of the challenge was not wanting to, you know, from our vantage point, not really knowing which of those were beginning to bear fruit, which of those weren't, and how to manage that. So, that's a reason why the recommendation is intentionally a little bit more vague, was not wanting to interfere with any of the well-intended efforts to assist in that process that are originating from lots of different places within the greater Madison, you know, ecosystem.
Yeah, and I will say that, you know, the recommendations are not easy recommendations. They would have certainly said that, I think. I think you're right. I think it's a difficult thing to have, a conversation to have with someone who is angry, which is why one of the recommendations talks about the fact that the department evolved to use community dialogue representatives, people who could serve as intermediaries. And certainly, some of those persons may even be on this call today. But that's a very important mode of communication when you're dealing with someone who's angry. If you think about a time in your life where you've never had an opportunity to communicate or convince someone who's angry to do something, it's not easy. It certainly doesn't get any easier wearing a uniform when you're the subject of it. But, the recommendation from the stakeholders, I believe they're right. You have to try, whether you're successful or not, you have to try.
Thank you very much. I see other colleagues are in line. I'll come back. I have one more final question, but go ahead, President Abbas. Go call the next person.
Thank you, Alder Carter, Alder Vehily.
Thank you. I have to say, I'm a little bit disappointed with the reports. Mainly, as a community member, I think what we saw at State Street, I don't condone any violence or property damage, but I think the report focuses more on the damage and what has happened or the violence in State Street. A couple of my questions are, you said you interviewed 30 MPDs. And I'm just curious, as the stakeholders, I think it could have, perhaps you can tell us, who are those stakeholders in the minds of those protesters that you interviewed? Why they were doing what they were doing? Or was it just the other community members who are more of, for pro-business or who are really didn't support the violence? So, I'm just curious as who those stakeholders were.
If I'm understanding your question, Alder, the stakeholders are all listed in the appendix to the report. And so, they're all there and you can review and see who those stakeholders were.
And do we have access to the questions that were asked in terms of getting the reports?
No, there was not a standard set of questions. We were asking people to tell us essentially stories of moments they'd had during the protests. You do have access to the community input from the website. That's all in the report and its verbatim. But we didn't have standard interview questions. It was more free flowing to understand the specific events that people wanted to talk about.
And the 30 MPDs that you interviewed, were there specifically those who were involved in the protest?
Yes, they were all specifically involved in the protest.
They were not, I'm sorry, you know, they were not the only sample size. Is that what you're asking? Are you asking, was the MPD the only person's input that was used for this report? Because I believe that there were additional.
So, my question is, some of the MPDs were involved in the protest, right?
Yes.
And some of the stakeholders were involved in the protest? That's my question. I'm trying to make points here.
Yes, I believe that to be true.
Okay. Okay. And my final comment is, as Alder Carter said, the last statement is angry community. I don't know if I can use that word angry, but perhaps concerned community? Because I think, you know, we have, as a community, a black community, we have been subjected over 200 years of institutional racism and angry is just underrated. So I think perhaps their concern is a better word. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alder Vehily. Alder Heck.
Thank you, President Abbas. First, I just wanted to thank Assistant Chief Valenta for all her hard work on this and also recognize that Vic Wall had a lot to do with that, former acting chief Vic Wall, and to thank Chief Barnes for his apparent ready embracement of all these recommendations. I look forward to working with the Public Safety Review Committee and I hope, Chief Barnes, that you'll come to the Public Safety Review Committee with this and we can work together with you on implementing these recommendations. Is that something you'd be willing to give a go?
Yes, sir, I will do my best.
Excellent, thank you. And then just a couple of questions for John. You know, you mentioned that the report was released to the public today, but you know, you also mentioned that you've been already seeing MPD working on implementing some of the recommendations. So, that implies that MPD has had some parts of this report or drafts for quite a while. Is that the case?
I guess, I don't want to parse words, it depends on what you mean by quite a while, but yes, certainly they have had time to review this. Part of the process is to have, and it was, you know, having both Assistant Chief Valenta and Captain Ty working on the process meant that we had senior level leadership from MPD participating in the design of the recommendations, which does two things that are positive. One is, it makes sure that we understand if there might be certain recommendations that might be hard to implement. And it ensures that when the recommendations are made public, as these were, we already know that MPD is supportive of them and that will aid in their implementation. So, did the, all of the stakeholders who created these recommendations have had multiple drafts of the report as we've been working on it and that has been an ongoing process. So, it's not just MPD that has that access to it, it's all of the stakeholder group that's had access to earlier versions of the report as we worked to refine the wording and make sure that everybody was in agreement on the consensus recommendations. But as part of that, then MPD was able to look at this and decide if there were things that they could immediately start implementing, they were able to elect to do so and were gratified that they had chosen to do that.
And I'll just point out, as the process moved along, there were multiple occasions of kind of aha moments. And as protests have been ongoing, when you come across an idea that you think is going to be valuable, that is insightful, that the community is endorsing, it would be silly to wait to implement that. And so, we did have some very positive experiences with the community dialogue representatives at the end of August. That particular strategy was highly endorsed by the stakeholders during the discussions. And that seemed to me, as we moved forward and through the protests that continued, that we wanted to implement that and use that strategy to continue to be successful. Because our goal ultimately is to facilitate people's rights and their ability to express themselves lawfully and peacefully in the First Amendment demonstrations. And if we can do something to help keep that peaceful, that's not something I'd want to keep in my back pocket to roll out after the report. It's something I would want to implement immediately for the safety and the betterment of our community.
Thanks. I think that second aspect of the answer is really important, that the other stakeholders were involved and it wasn't just you working with MPD, that other people were in the processing. That was good to hear. Just one more question, and I'm not necessarily a skeptic, I just want to ask for everyone's benefit. Does funding, I see that funding for the report came from DOJ primarily. What are the other primary sources of funding for the center? Do law enforcement organizations contribute to the center?
No. So I think the Bureau of Justice Assistance and NIJ are actually research and development organizations that are part of DOJ. So they are, you know, NIJ is a scientific organization that happens to reside within DOJ so it can focus on criminal justice issues as opposed to, you know, being a part of a prosecuting organization, right? The center's funding is an initial endowment from our founders. And then we have done a variety of other foundation and other funding and often not in a protest review, but we have had jurisdictions want us to do other seminal interviews in other areas where they had other undesired outcomes and they have paid us to do that. So, we're not, but we are not funded by law enforcement organizations.
Okay, I really appreciate all the answers and thanks again to everybody for the report. I'm done.
Thank you, Alder Heck. I have a couple of questions. My first question is about, in your recommendation, you mentioned about body worn camera. And you already review over 625 hours of video. How could body worn camera impact your report? So just for presumption point of view, in case if there was a body worn camera, what would come different?
Sure. So, once, there were a variety of ways that we could identify officers who were participating in the specific critical incidents that we had identified. Once we've identified those officers, it would be a relatively simple task to go pull the body worn camera from minute A to minute Z of a particular critical incident and then find out what other officers were also participating in that and compare and contrast. So, I mentioned that we had done some work with Seattle in their protest. Seattle has the actual opposite of Madison in that there we're able to review body camera footage, but they're not allowed to archive any CCTV video, so we don't have access to that. And what we see in those instances is we're able to actually compare the body cameras to the use of force reports that are put out so that we can establish the things. And we're able to also use multiple angles from officers who are on the same scene to establish different perspectives and see the event from a different way. It's a little bit like the difference between using Google Maps Street View and using Google Maps Satellite View. And each of them gives you different information about the event that you can then use to understand contributing factors and therefore make more sophisticated recommendations.
I will add an additional to that. In our previous organization, we have body worn cameras. We also had some public space cameras similar to what we have here. When we did have a view of our protests from 2020, we were able to take some of the video from the public space cameras and add sound because the officers had body worn camera. So you had the body worn camera street view with sound and from a high up view from the public space cameras, you had sound as well. So it really gave my presentation to city council. I had a very talented captain who could do that stuff, but it really made my presentation to council a lot easier and smoother. They could kind of see from different vantage points what we had at that particular protest and we could talk about what that really was a little later on, but certainly.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And last question is about community dialogue representatives. In your analysis, you mentioned about them. I'm also curious to know, moving forward, if those type of model can be used on nonprofits, you know, beside police, if we can use those dialogues? I just want to get those representative, you know, input from you. What is your thought?
So, what we tried to do in the report with regard to community dialogue representatives was to provide examples of other departments that are doing some similar things. Some of them actually overseas. Sweden has been a big proponent of this. And different departments are pursuing And different departments are pursuing this in slightly different ways. For some departments, they want them to be members of the police, but maybe not uniformed. For some places, they don't want them to be members of the police, they want them to be part of the community. But then there are other kind of concerns and operational challenges. And so this is a new concept that I think M P D is just starting to embrace. And the underlying philosophy of it was very welcomed by everybody around the stakeholder group table. But we wanted to not be overly prescriptive of something new and say, this is how you should do this, as much as we wanted to capture the philosophy that we thought was useful and then leave room for maybe this group and M P D and the community representatives to continue to work that out. I mean, one of the kind of implicit assumptions in a continuous quality improvement initiative is that we get better one step at a time. And we're not going to just snap our fingers and all of a sudden be perfect. We're going to keep making changes as we see what's working and continue to enhance. And so we try to provide some other examples so that as you're thinking about how to implement this, you've got data points to look at and other people potentially consult with and learn from so that it can be done as effectively as possible in the next go around.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Aldo Bennett?
Hi. Okay. So just to, I know this is asked a few times, but just so I fully understand, Appendix A includes all of the participants within this report. Are there any left out or for namesake or anything?
Can you, I just want to make clear, I'm understanding what you mean by participants.
Participants that were, like, participants, I believe, in these conversations.
So the stakeholder group was, that is a complete list of the stakeholder group, which are the individuals that regularly met to evaluate the critical event, the critical incidents, and who participated in the creation of contributing factors and who's, when we say their consensus recommendations, they are the people who make up the consensus.
And what work did you do to build the stakeholder group?
That was largely an M P D process, reaching out to as many people as possible. The Quatron Center reached out to some organizations and invited them to participate. A number of organizations chose to participate. Again, the entire process was voluntary. Some organizations, well, and some individuals felt that the time commitment was not appropriate or they were not interested in sort of revisiting these events. And over time, we got that to a group that was, where we felt it was as broad as we could get it and as workable as we could get it. And that's when we started the forum.
Okay. And understanding that, I have to share in Alder Vehelli's disappointment. I think this report is overall very comprehensive. I think it's really good. Overall, I have to still read it thoroughly, but in just perusing it, I think it's pretty comprehensive. My disappointment comes from the point of, like, my perspective as someone that was on the streets as a protester during some events and as an organizer in others that are, like, in several of the critical incidences listed in this report. I can specifically go to and know exactly who were the people on the streets organizing these events. And quite frankly, a lot of these folks that were engaged, I think there's only three community organizations not affiliated with a governmental entity, including like the university, city, county. Those three being the Urban League, the M I Center for Urban Leadership and Development, the Boys and Girls Club. And from like my perspective, being out there on the streets, some of, I don't recall these organizations being present during some of those events. And I do recall others that were not listed as stakeholders. And the fact that I can reach out to some of these individuals that were organizers during these events, and they had no idea that this Quatron report was being put together, were not really engaged in that process, lends me to believe that there is key stakeholders that is missing from this report and key perspectives that was not included. So I just, I have to put that out there, that, well, I do believe that this report is quite comprehensive and offers great recommendations that we should certainly look into. I think that there's also a missing component in here that we need to look at and we need to, if it comes down to maybe like updating this, the report, and include other critical incidences that have happened since putting together this report. That's something that we should look into and participate in because it's important.
Thank you, and I appreciate the kind words for the report. I wish that you had shared this perspective either through our website or gotten some of your colleagues to share their perspectives because we certainly did everything in our power to be available to hear them. And we included everything that we received after, you know, a fairly substantial publicity campaign to let people know about those options and opportunities to participate. So I do appreciate your remarks.
Yeah. And to be completely honest, I heard about the Quatron report from a fellow alder during the summer. So I don't, I am sure you did as much as you can through the publicity campaign, but I just want to be frank there that, I don't know. If it comes down to like getting more community feedback, I think that that's worth doing. So I just wanted to put that out there. Also, I was wondering if there is public access to the video footage that was sent to the Quatron Center?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know what the rules are for the maintenance of that footage.
Open records request for those, for that footage would be the appropriate way to gather that information.
Okay. I understand because from what I understand, there was an open records request put in by the PSRC Chair Brenda Conkle back in February. And she hasn't received that yet. So I don't know if there's a follow-up needed, but I was wondering if there is public access to that footage.
I know there were some issues with the terabyte file that we were needed for the all the videos, because it's certainly a lot, you can't email it. But I can certainly look into that, Aldo Bennett. I do remember some conversation about it, about the specifics are probably with Julie Landry, who is our public records manager.
Sweet, sweet. Thank you. And I just want to make it clear that I'm not trying to be like terribly mean about this. And I think it's a pretty great report. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aldo Bennett. And thank you very much for coming here in Madison and giving us a presentation. And thanks for the report. Really appreciate that. With that, we will have Stefan, I believe, thirteen minutes, correct?
That is correct.
All right. We quickly go on agenda item number three, legislative file number six eight three seven four, update on council redistricting communications. Madeline?
Hi, yeah, I'll try and keep this short and sweet since we're a little low on time. So just to recap, maps were finalized by the council on November second. Planning staff has the most up-to-date information on the maps on their redistricting website. And that website is also linked to the council website. So alders and members of the public can find that information there as well. Mockups similar to the postcard, the 2012 postcards, which were attached to this item, have been created for every alder. So I plan on reaching out to alders in the coming weeks with those mockups to run them past you all and make sure that it has the information that you want on there. But that being said, there was a question at the last update on October fifth from Alder Foster, I believe, about, you know, when systems are going to be updated and when links online are going to become live. Systems aren't going to be updated until late this year. So postcard mailings should be postponed until next year. Because in my opinion and the opinion of other staff, the information sent out should match what is online to reduce confusion amongst the public. And Dave Faust from I T has graciously been sitting in on the meeting. If you have any further questions about how those updates are done, or the backend processes that need to occur and why they're occurring at the end of the year and not now.
Thank you, Madeline. Any question for Dave or Aldo Carter?
Thank you. Dave or Madeline? The redistricting districts do not go into effect until January. So why would anyone be sending this out in December?
I just wanted to clarify for any alders that thought maybe the mailings would be going out this month. I know there was some interest in them going out by the end of this year versus next year. But Aldo Carter, your thought process is kind of what we're operating under at this point in time, that nothing should be sent out until everything else has been updated. So when people go online, they have the correct information and aren't confused.
Great. Thank.
Thank you, Aldo Carter. One thought was behind sending this year, end of this year, because of budget reason, those mailing cards will go through a council budget, probably through all dramatic budgets. So the idea was to use remaining leftover dollars to publish and send. That was another rationale behind it. Aldo Heck?
Thanks, President Abbas. Madeline, thanks for the information. I agree with what you're proposing. Just one silly little quick suggestion to use ten-digit phone numbers and not seven-digit phone numbers. I saw the, on the draft card, it was only seven.
No worries. I got that notice as well. They've all been updated with six oh eight area codes or whatever other area code and alder may have associated with their phone number at this point. And to address the budgetary concerns, I have talked to our budget person in the finance department, and she has indicated that if mailings end up being around the ballpark that they were in 2012, we should still have enough money in the council office budget to cover it, whether it's, whether it were to be sent out now or in January.
Thanks.
Thank you, Aldo Heck, and thanks, Madeline, for update. Aldo Figueroa Cole?
Sorry, quick question. So Madeline, you are going to then connect with us for proofing type of thing? Is that going to happen before you send them out?
Sorry, my apologies. Could you repeat that? I couldn't.
Am I going to be able to prove the cards before you send them out? Like the phone number and things like that?
Yes, I'll be reaching out to all the alders individually with their mockups to make sure that it says and looks exactly how the alder would like it to be.
Thank you.
Any further questions? I do not see any hand raised. Dave, thank you.
Yeah, President Abbas, I'll just add that staff are planning to execute the updates on the thirtieth of December. And so we'll make those changes to the databases and the maps and the pages probably on the thirtieth. And that evening is when that information will propagate out to the different websites. So sometime the evening of the thirtieth, the morning of the thirty-first, if you look up Who's My Alder Based on Your Address, it will reflect the new values then.
Wonderful. I was actually going to ask you that. That's great. Thank you, Dave, for being here and.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thanks all. And if there is no further discussion, can I please have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn. Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you all. We'll see you at six thirty. Bye.